Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting in Longdale City Council, special meeting to order and ask the city clerk to give his run call. Madam City Clerk?
Okay. Good evening. Mayor Rotan Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you ma'am. Next on our schedule, I'm going to ask the pro temp attorney to lead us from the place of allegiance.
Please stand with your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you sir.
Your word.
Next item is oral communication. We'd like to speak to this body on oral communications. Seeing none in the audience, I'm gonna close oral communications as well as comments from the council. And we're gonna bring it up to our first presentation is item number one, consideration of public arts program that's had staff before.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before we get into the reports by both Sean and Julian, I just wanted to tee this up a little bit. We've asked for this special meeting tonight, and thank you, by the way, for ordering to this meeting. But we've asked for this meeting so that we could spend a little bit of time on these two items that have come up in discussion by the council over the last year or so. So when it comes to the public arts program, of course, this is something that the city has looked at over time, the last few years. There's actually a policy in place, and this preceded me, I'm not exactly sure what happened with that policy, but it has not been implemented. So we wanted to bring this back for this council, considering the fact that there's, you know, a few new council members, a couple of new council members, to give you a chance to provide some further input on it, and hopefully we'll get some direction from you and come up with a new, hopefully, public arts, a public arts program for the city. The other item regarding parkways, as I understand it, this is an item that comes up from time to time, maybe once a year or every couple of years. And, you know, having seen that, and this already came up one time since I've been here, it came up last year, I thought it would be worthwhile for the council and staff to try to work on something together, that maybe we can come up with a new policy where it could be somewhat simplified, to the point where we can encourage improvements to be done in our parkways, that would help beautify the city, and make it so that it's not cumbersome and not complicated for our residents, and hopefully it'll be a policy that will, you know, be lasting over time, and we won't have to revisit this for at least a couple of years, maybe, maybe longer. So we'll see how that goes. So with that, I'm gonna invite Sean first to start his presentation on arts in public places.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, and members of the audience. So the item we have for you for consideration is the public arts program. We're seeking direction from the city council, and as the council as well, where public arts improve the quality of life for the community, promotes cultural understanding and embraces public health, stimulates economic development, and creates spaces for all to enjoy. Currently, the city, as Kevin mentioned, does not have a public arts ordinance that addresses specific public art murals throughout the city. However, the city has operated since 2006 on a, on a, and a policy adopted by the city council back in 2006. More recently, however, the council adopted a development impact fee study, which also included arts in public places. When developers come in and develop properties throughout the city, there's a fee, a small fee attached related to help fund for public arts in, public art in public places. In addition to that, the city recently has been working, we've had issues throughout the last couple of years, where issues with murals have come up, also placement of public art from community, as well as murals and paintings and mural type paintings on walls, both business, private businesses, and then public areas that we've come into contact with over the last few years. What staff has put together a general list of items for discussion tonight, for consideration and possible direction to the city staff. So one thing to consider is location of public art in residential areas, that's come up because residents have asked about that. Placement of art in both commercial and industrial areas, within both public and private areas, that's, that's been a topic as well. Temporary public art is something else to consider. Art in public spaces like parks and other city-owned property, that's something to consider. And art on public utility boxes, box art is commonly referred to, I know that's come up over the years, people have come into the department, the community development, asked about that. Establishment and placement of development regulations for murals. And now, we do not have something specific for that, and that's happened on some of the commercial areas in the city, where some folks have businesses on their private property and put murals over there, whatnot. Establishment and review and approval process for public art, we do not have an ordinance that regulates how we process public art applications and whatnot in application fees. And then finally, development of a public arts plan in order to identify specific areas for the placement of public art throughout the city, that would be like on public property and whatnot. Now, there are some challenges with public art, and my previous jurisdictions, I actually have mentioned to Kevin, I've worked in public art in public places, and it can be controversial, and it can be challenging and political as well. So one of the things to consider is proliferation of murals throughout the city, especially if the council, you know, wanted to allow them businesses or whatnot, rather than public areas. Establish, an establishment of approval process that's not too cumbersome and bureaucratic for stakeholders. Because the public arts community, they're a little bit less wanting to have all the bureaucracy that's attached to that, it would, you know, something more simplified process so folks can come to the city and apply for public art. Public involvement in the process, that's key, that's something that can get very controversial. And this has happened in my previous jurisdiction, where people have been dissatisfied with the approval of some public art, and, you know, I still get calls about some of the things that were approved. Difficulty in developing various types of public art, that can be very challenging. Development of public art for children. One, one thing that I mentioned to Kevin, we worked at, where you put, you allowed chalk, children commented to chalk up the city hall area, you know, that sometimes that can be controversial, people complain about it, you know, blocking the access to city hall, but it is a fun event, too, those are sometimes can be controversial. The other thing to consider, especially with murals, constitutional constraints on content of murals, that can get really political, and it can get, I won't speak for the legal folks, but our city attorney's office, but that can be very challenging as well. And then limitations on areas for placement of public art, as you know, Longdale's built out, most of our development is built out, most of our areas in the city, so it could be challenging. We do have opportunities throughout the city to place public art, obviously, but in some of the private areas and stuff, that may be challenging. And it is potentially controversial. We did, there are, with this proposal, if council directs staff to move forward with some kind of ordinance or policy, revised policy, we don't anticipate any fiscal impacts. As I mentioned, the city took the first step in developing a fund, with the DIF fund to relate to development, so we have a way to develop, get fees in for the, for the public art in public places. This concludes staff's report. Staff's requesting that the city council provide direction to city staff on development of a policy or an ordinance for public art.
Thank you for that report. So I guess we can begin a discussion on the, there's a lot of ways we can do this if we, if it's the desire of this body in terms of outlining a program, arts program. I would just give you a little historical, if 2006, not really, not your history, but the idea behind this arts program initially was to use arts, not just a way of beautifying the community, but as an economic development tool as well. When I took a look at particularly the city of Sarito, the model city, they have a number of pieces of art in public places. And it was another city, I can't think off the top of my head, and there was a whole write-up on, I believe it was the Western magazine as well, about how public art can actually be an economic development tool or what have you. And that was really what we was trying to get to. Yeah, understanding that, yeah, it could be controversial or some art or what have you. But some of these other cities like Sarito, somehow they're able to make it happen, make it work for them, so there is ways that you can make it work for the city. Initially, we had, as you see in the staff report, the body that would take a review of these artists, like the, was the beautification committee, and that was, it just seemed like it was a natural fit, at least at the time, for the beautification committee to take a look at the art proposals or what have you, and decide whether or not it was fitting for the committee or what have you. And whether or not they had the final say, that part, we hadn't flushed out, whether it would be the city manager or the city council. But the initial review would be the beautification committee. It may not necessarily be the advantageous for us to have the beautification committee do it at this point, or maybe, maybe so, maybe you can stick with that, I'm not necessarily married to that, but I do believe that we should have a, some type of public review body before it's approved by the city manager's office or the council or whomever. You spoke about the trust, the trust fund on page, one of these pages, it says page two of this policy, talks about arts in public places, trust fund. You're correct with the development fees, we, we did that recently, adopted development fees, where a percentage of the costs for your permits or what have you will go towards the arts and public places program, which should have been activated really in 2006, because as you can see in the staff report, it calls for a trust fund to be developed, which we just not getting around to doing so.
Right.
Had we fully adopted the trust fund portion, which I had no idea that we had not fully executed, we probably have a few dollars in that account now. But nonetheless, we're moving ahead, and I'd just like to take everybody's opinion on to see what we want to do with this, how we want to shape this policy and revamp the existing policy. So anybody want to speak on it?
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
This is DeShawn, I think I know the answer to this question, but I'd like to hear it from you, because things might have changed. Back in about the 2006 era, we had some art placed at a school that inundated the mayor at that time, my dad, his telephone. The neighbors were just upset about it. When we're talking about a policy, are we talking about a policy that can have some jurisdiction over that as well, or are schools still, they can do what they want to on their sides of their walls?
Yes, the schools would be exempt from city regulations and policies and whatnot.
Okay, that's what I, I knew back then it was, and I didn't know if anything had changed.
Councilmember Rodriguez, for us?
I just have a question with regards to, I guess, freedom of speech, and how that plays into if someone wants to put something that has possibly a political message, and we say, no, you know, we don't want anything controversial. Is there, are there repercussions, could they legally bite us? I guess this is a question for a city attorney.
The answer is probably yes. There are some limitations. For example, the city has the right, the five of you, as the elected representatives of the city, have the right to set up a program that limits what kind of art can be put on your city property. So if you want to limit art on city property to art that you choose, you have every right to do that. If you set up, and Mr. Moore's mentioned a mural program, if you set up a mural program, that might be a little bit tougher. Even a mural program that is supposed to be focused on the history and culture of the city could wind up with pieces of it that are offensive to some members of the community. So that's something to think about as you're deciding what types of programs, what types of public art do you want to bring in. Because if it's on private property, there's, they have a lot of rights, they have a lot of rights to do what they want on their property. You are certainly allowed to discriminate against commercial speech, and for example, not allow murals to go up that are commercial in nature, essentially advertisements that you otherwise wouldn't allow. But once it comes to non-commercial speech, we have to be very careful in what we do. So whatever direction you give tonight, if you want to have a program go one direction or another, Mr. Moore and I will take it, I'll run it past some of our First Amendment experts, he'll run it through what he knows, and then we'll come back to you with, you know, our best ability to meet your goals in terms of what kind of public art you want to see. But yes, absolutely, ma'am, when you open things up to art, you always open them up to the chance of a First Amendment suit.
Yes ma'am.
So in other words, in public art, if I'm understanding this correctly, like when you're out in the city of Bellflower, and under the underpasses, you're seeing their logo and things like that, that is all considered community art, right?
You know, would that be on Caltrans jurisdiction, and Kevin and I have talked to Caltrans about that, but I guess that would be considered some public art.
And so then...
But when they work with Caltrans on that, that'd be their jurisdiction as well.
So then, my next thought is, I know we have talked about a communications person, I think that somewhere along the lines, before we got too far into drafting something for community art, we ought to be considering that logo that we have been discussing for a few months, and getting help with a city logo, so that everything wasn't our city seal, that our city, our city emblem is used more for a, what, formal versus something less formal.
Talking about our logo, part of the south face or our logo here?
Well, when we were discussing it a couple of months ago, we talked about coming up with a city quote logo, that we would be, that we would be identifying with, such as Downey uses the big D, and Lomita, as we just came back from Contract Cities, is its whole name, but it's the way it's written that is identified as their logo versus versus the seal, that to a lot of people is a more formal.
Yeah.
And I would like to see us make, have an idea of where we're heading towards on a quote logo of identifier, so that it can be put into some community art.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to respond to that comment, we can, we can certainly do that. We're in the process of setting out an RFP to hire a communications consultant, and, you know, once the consultant is onboard, that's something that we can certainly look at and, you know, work with the council on. But if I could, also wanted to piggyback on the comments from Bernadette, your comments, and then Greg's response. I guess therein lies the problems, potential problems with, with art, and specifically with murals. It's one of those things where if the council decides to approve murals, then it's hard to pick and choose which ones, you know, where you might want to approve a mural, and in a case where you might not want to, you're pretty limited in terms of being able to deny something like that. So it becomes hard for the city to pick and choose, and then it's also becomes difficult in terms of limiting the type of content. So, you know, for example, I'll just use what came up several months ago, with Kobe Bryant's death anniversary and the mural that was, that started to be painted on the barber shop wall. You know, Kobe is a much beloved sports figure in LA, represents a lot, to a lot of people, championships, you know, great basketball. But for some others, it could represent something else from, from his past. And so, you know, on one hand, it could be a mural that's much supported, but on the other hand, it could be something that other people find offensive, or take offense to. So, you know, if we allow one business to put up a mural, it would be, we would be hard-pressed as staff to, you know, disallow another mural elsewhere, because maybe, you know, that, the message of that mural may, may not be accepted by the community. So it just makes for a difficult situation. So I just wanted to make sure that the council understood that, you know, sure, murals sound like a good thing, you know, it could, you know, add to the beauty of the community, but at the same time, it becomes hard to limit. The other part of that is, if we, if the council does choose to allow murals, then there is the other item that Sean mentioned, which is proliferation. And, you know, that's a decision for the council to make, if you would, if you allow murals, potentially you could see murals on every other commercial building on Hawthorne Boulevard, and, you know, is that what you would like to see for, for this community? So that's just another thing to think about.
Yeah, for me, on the mural part, you mentioned the proliferation of murals, of course, we can regulate how many murals we will allow in the city, so to me, that's not a big problem, we just have, if we decide to do murals, we can decide how many, so we can regulate how many murals will be in the city. The biggest issue is the one that you, that you outlined, is the content, more so than how many, you know, it's easier to regulate, we decide four murals and one in each quadrant is enough, we can do that, whatever the magic number is, but the content is a little more challenging. And when you have like characters or actors, not actors in the traditional sense, but it's based on people or what have you, then that gets a little more tricky, as opposed to more, something that's just more abstract, or it's not based on a personality figure or what have you. I would recommend that, that when we get to recommendations, that if we do have murals, that we not allow the representation of personalities, that way you won't get into, well, we like this person, or we don't like that person, you know, what have you. But if it's, if it's just art, it's a little harder to make that, you know, that argument that this person has a bad reputation that we don't want to be affiliated with, or in some cases, some people may say, yeah, we do want to be affiliated with it, I'm okay with it, or what have you. And we eliminate that by not allowing the personage of people, just my thoughts on the mural part, if we're gonna do murals, you know, at all.
I understand what you're saying, Robert, and I agree with you on the mural. I like the utility boxes, because we don't do, does that, if you go down by the green line, you'll see it all down there. We can put it in all part of the center, we can put it on, whatever we have to do there. I like on our own property, I'm okay with. What, I got several phone calls a few months back, they got a movement on a fence on 167th and Conda, I had neighbors on both streets calling it, yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, well, I had two different neighbors, one each street, a different movement per se, complaining about this. I don't think we should allow those in there. I mean, I'm all full of movements, but you're gonna start animosity against neighborhoods and neighborhoods. So I'm good with the box, the box art, yeah, public art, and the kids program, we did that at, who would our parent remember that? We did the little, they call it, slate you put into the wall?
The tiles.
The tile, that's it, thank you, the tile, yeah. But I, I don't, murals kind of scare me. I mean, Kobe Bryant and his daughter was fine, I like that, because he is a celebrity, but he also had some lovers with him, and I don't want to see that any more, you know. Like you said, one end was left handed, right hand's doing, and we don't like this, we don't like that. But box art and our own private, our property, I'm good with.
And I like the utility boxes, as well, matter of fact, there was, some time ago, we were supposed to be painting some utility boxes.
Remember that?
Had some funding, but for some reason, it didn't, it didn't happen. To this day, I still understand why that was such a big, a big issue, because it has worked wonderfully in many, in fact, when you, when you paint or do art on the utility boxes, they less likely to get vandalized and have graffiti, you know, and so I'm for utility boxes. Go ahead, Robert.
I would be okay with utility boxes, but I would want them to make sense, either all be, so that they were all about the same purpose, or, you know, if it was city, like you said, something that was similar to each other, or you could put them together and they somewhat told a story, something like, you know, like a quilt would do. You can look at it and go, oh wow, this one, this one, yeah, they have a common theme to them, that's what I would like to see.
Um, I'm okay with murals, but if we could put a limit to it, and like, I do agree in no characters, either movie characters or actual person, and artsy, not political or anything like that, like, I don't know, sunshine, or, you know, very artsy, not anything political or a person. I do like the idea of the boxes being painted, maybe it could be a program that we could run it with the school district, or have our youth, our YAC kids present something to, to us as far, as part of their arts. And then I do like the little tiles, again, if we could do them for our, our properties.
I have a comment.
Yes ma'am.
There's also, we could also do probably even temporary murals, where maybe they only go up for a certain number of days, and then, you know, after that, it needs to get painted over or something.
Yeah, I agree with you there.
To councilmember Suarez's idea, one thing, and it's not California, but I have seen, and I'm willing to look at it, and I'll work with Mr. Moore on it, is something that's actually on city property, and it's sort of what you might see at a college, it's sort of a revolving mural wall, where somebody will be able to put up their message for 30 or 60 days, then it comes down, and then the one goes up. And in that way, yes, you're going to get some political messages, but they'll be short-term, and it'll be known that they're short-term, because they'll only get 30 or 60 days, and then the next message goes up, which helps to sort of moderate or mitigate the concern about the First Amendment, because you might not get what you love, but it'll be out of the way pretty soon. And we, if we did that, it's obviously something we're gonna present to you and see whether you like it. Yes ma'am?
Oh, I, a quick question, if during certain maybe election cycles, is it possible to not have any murals during those time periods? Since technically speaking, I think, I mean, depending on where it is, you can't even have it near election sites.
Right. If we get direction to investigate this, we'll come back with the strongest possible limitations that we think you can put on it, and then you all can decide whether you want to move forward with it or not. But yeah, absolutely, that'd be something I would want to consider for you, ma'am.
If, I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
With regards to Bernadette's idea, are, are we able to charge a certain fee to have their art presented, or is it part of that 1% that we are charging?
We can certainly look into it.
But it's not part of the 1%, the 1% is what's imposed on developers.
On development, okay.
And then, the money goes into a trust fund, and the city, like I said, on our own initiative, could use the money from the trust fund to...
To use for art.
Do a piece of art, whether it regards to a piece of art, or artists or what have you. And also, members of the public, I would suppose that we would want to allow them to, to possibly make application for funding. You know, like say, for instance, if they're gonna do the art themselves, or what have you, or they can hire artists or what have you, they could possibly be eligible for funding out of that source. So it's either the city using the fundings to initiate and to do the art, or a nonprofit or just community in general can have access to it. That's really the purpose of the trust fund, to make sure the money's there for the purchase and the placement of art. That's a good idea. So I think we decided that we... So I think we decided that we wanna make sure that we can, we control the, the number of murals and the, and then, of course, temporary murals, when in fact, a temporary mural can be, um, created in what duration, uh, that can stay in, in whatever blackout period, if any, um, that we have on a temporary mural. But the regular murals, we just, uh, regulate how many, and not necessarily content, but the, the type of murals.
Have we decided for four murals or five?
No, I'm just outlining what we have first, what, what, what we're working with first.
Mr. Mayor, just for a point of clarification as well, did you want bit on private businesses? Murals that be on, or in public?
So, or just talk about public.
Just make, just clarify.
But anyone interested in private, if someone wants to run a private business? So I think we control it more if we decide to do it on public, you know, private.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's, uh, really the point I was making. Um, if the council chooses to allow for murals on private property, say on commercial buildings, um, again, you know, there, um, you know, you, you would, you would need to understand that, uh, there could be a proliferation of murals, you know, all along Hawthorne Boulevard, and, you know, is that what the council would like to see? So I'm, I'm not sure how, or if we could limit, um, murals if we were to allow them on commercial buildings. Greg speak to that.
I would have to look into whether we could put down hard and fast limitations. I, I do think that Mr. Moore and I could work out some kind of limitations, like, um, a mural could only be on a wall that doesn't have windows or doors on it, uh, so that you're, you're talking about a blank wall. Well, there aren't too many of those. Uh, that might be a natural limitation, or a mural can't face Hawthorne Boulevard, it would have to face a side street. There, there are ways to go through it. So if you want us to look at limitations, Mr. Mayor, the first thing I'll do is to see if whether we can just have numeric limitations, um, 'cause that makes sense. But if that's not something we can do, then just by virtue of some of those, um, you know, limiting the types of walls that are eligible, we might be able to do it that way. That might, that might be a good way to do it without running afoul of the First Amendment. So we, we'll take a look at it, uh, if, if you all give us direction, and, and that's certainly something I think that working together we can do. And it, it'll take a little bit of time, you know, whether it's myself or Mr. Moore's staff, kind of driving a little bit, you know, thinking through, what, what kind of limitations make sense, given the walls and the, the, the private businesses that we have? What makes sense to meet your ultimate desire and direction to us, and then, then we'll go with that?
I guess we should decide, um, so that you're not just out open the mat, investigating a whole bunch of stuff that we may or may not be interested in. Decide, uh, on the murals, do we want at least have the staff to look into? Not that we adopt anything, because we weigh, just weigh early for that. Do we want them to at least look into it, based on what the, the, Greg was just saying, about, the city attorney was saying about, at least looking into how you can regulate it, if you decide to do it, the numbers and stuff like that?
I'm okay with it. Uh, I'm, I'm also okay with it. If it, I, I have a feeling we'll have a limited amount of murals on Hawthorne.
And that's just a, and that's just giving the, the organization to look into, spend time looking into it. I mean, I don't know how I feel about the actual adoption, or see how that, that works and stuff, you know?
So let's, let's get a situation now. The Halloween store, 160, 171st, they have a giant banner out there. We allow murals, they can do banners on each side of the wall, 'cause there's no windows on each, on the north or the south side. But if we let that happen, can we restrict the banner being up?
So, uh, as Mr. Murphy's pointed out, we have to be very careful, because the signage, we have a sign program requirements on our city, so that's regulated separately. Um, but the murals too, as, as Mr. Murphy's pointed out, we have to be very careful with too, um, especially on private property, so, and businesses, so, uh, we could, you guys could reg, the council could regulate that on the north and south of the, you're talking seventeen thousand, I believe, the property at seventeen thousand on Hawthorne Boulevard, east side. Um, that property there, you, they do have exposure on the north and south sides of the building, so you, the council could definitely regulate that. But with concerns of banners and whatnot, that's a separate regulation under our signs.
Well, you know, I don't want to, but it's only a thirty day thing, so it means not all year long.
Yeah.
So that's like a verdict saying, that can be put up in thirty days after Halloween, or November first it comes down, 'cause that's a temporary thing, correct? Don't you stand right up here?
Yeah, same. Some of them temporary, then they have to come down after a certain amount of time.
Okay. Go ahead, Ronan.
I would just like to answer your question and say that I'm probably the conservative one up here. I'm not really pro, um, murals, and especially on our Boulevard. I would entertain the idea if there were three, the majority of the council wanted to look at it, I would look at it, but, um, I appreciate what Greg was saying about figuring out where we could put it to limit it, okay? But I'm not in favor of murals. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ronan.
And I'm, uh, Ron, Ron to two.
Yeah, well, I, and thank you, thank you for that. I'm not crazy about it, but I will say that I have seen in a few cities where they had one or two murals in the city, and it's, at least in my opinion, I don't know about on New Year, that I had a problem with seeing it, it's like, oh, that's nice, or what have you, didn't have any problems. And just like, I think, one of the cities, Manhattan Beach, and there's no, there's not a whole bunch of murals, uh, Manhattan Beach, there's only, actually, there's only one I know of. Uh, so I've seen it work in some cities. How they regulate it to the fact that they only have that one, at least that I've seen, you know, if I go through Manhattan Beach or what have you, uh, I don't know, but I, I thought it was nice, and I've seen a couple of other cities with, you know, one or two murals. On the other hand, I've seen a couple of other cities that just, it's just terrible, where the murals are everywhere, and I don't know if those are, are well regulated, I don't know if those are sanctioned, or if somebody just decided to put them up in the city, just don't see them, or what have you, but there's a few cities like that as well, so I understand that, um, as well. It could be in a case to where you decide not to do murals, permanent murals at all, and just do some temporary murals, allow only temporary murals. In that case, it'd be only up to like thirty days or what have you, and probably have to coincide with something or some reason to help. Like I could see like a holiday, uh, mural, or what have you, for thirty days or what have you, because then it is temporary and it coincides with something, it's just not random, you know, or what have you, you know, or if one of our, uh, teams, you know, wins something prestigious, that we wanna do a mural for thirty days or what have you. I don't have a problem with that one, at, at, at all, because it's temporary. I do have some concerns like you, um, um, if we have a lot of murals around town, so it would have to be very regulated. But in order to get there, I need to see at least some of the information, you know?
I, I agree, and I think we should look at it, because some of our, my feeling is pretty conservative.
Yes, yeah, I understand. I appreciate that. So, unless someone else have anything else on the mural part, if permanent and temporary, maybe we go to the other items, I think, just to get kind of consensus. It sounded like we already had consensus with utility boxes. If I like utility boxes, okay?
I agree with utility boxes.
Okay, so they can look into utility boxes. Okay, what was the other topic?
Hey, Charles, do you want to?
Yeah, the child, yeah. I don't think anyone have, anyone have any issue with, um, if someone have a child program?
A child program, one of the parts is.
Child program, okay, the child program. Um, okay, let's, that's the approval process. I guess this, I guess this would be something for the staff to look into, the establishment of the approval process, more so flushing that, that part out. Anyone have any thoughts on?
The approval.
Approval process? I think in some cases, s- somebody should, um, should look, to look at and give a recommendation, whether it's a certification committee, or subcommittee, or someone, uh, should at least look at that before it goes to, not necessarily before it goes to staff, to, to give, um, staff, um, the recommendation.
I will play the devil's advocate here, though. Um, and this is something to consider, is if we allow murals, we also have to have city staff watch that, it's like garage sales or anything else. Somebody might come up and pay their fee, and we know that it's going up and we approve of it. But then ten others suddenly appear, because they see that the first one is, they don't know the process, and then whoops, there they all go.
Yeah.
And so it's a policing issue, and I'm not necessarily sure that we wanna take that on.
That's a very good point, ma'am, and, and it kind of circles back to the mayor's point earlier, that, um, you may decide that it's only worth it for you to allow them on public land, and then not on private land, and which would then make it very easy for code staff to know that if it's, if it's on city land, or Caltrans land, or county owned land, it's okay, and if it's, if it's on a private building, then it's gonna be a code case. That, you may wanna go that way. That's something you all can decide later, after we've investigated what, you know, what may work or may not, yeah.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we say no to mural, at, at all, public or private, and we want Caltrans to do a mural underneath the freeway, or on the freeway, is that gonna cause a problem?
Well, once again, I think you kind of outlined, if we, if we lived into a public, uh,
But let's say we, we,
Public, it's not.
But let's say we decide to have no public or private.
I think I have another ask. The, the answer is, it always is in a study session, is I'll, I'll look at it to be sure. Um, but sort of my gut level legal answer is gonna be tonight. If Caltrans owns the wall, they can probably put a mural on it anyway, but if they've rededicated the street back to us, or if we have an agreement that we're responsible for it, and our program says no murals, then we wouldn't be allowed to put it up.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Thank you.
So then, that would, if I had the definition of a mural, like for instance, the, the baleflower, I wouldn't consider that a mural. Even though it's from Caltrans, I wouldn't consider that a mural. It is, it is a painting, in fact, you know, and it's, it looks pretty nice, you know, but I don't think that's a mural, I don't know. I'm not part, you know, uh, professor or anything, so I don't know what the real definition, would, would that be considered a mural?
I, I, I don't know.
So I think, I would think that we would still have to do, if we did something similar to
Is that a mural?
Something similar, um, to a baleflower, because I don't think that's a mural.
Yeah. It just depends on the, on what we define as a mural.
Apparently, baleflower's not a mural, so we could do that.
Right.
It looks very nice.
Okay, establishment of approval process, we, we're working out that one. Any thoughts on the establishment of the approval process? Of course, we wanna make it not too cumbersome, you know, or bureaucratic, as the states here agree with that.
I do like the idea, though, of having another body give recommendations, or having some type of oversight, um, whether it's one of our commissions or committees.
Okay. Um, you have any, you have any, um, suggestions on that? 'Cause we could be either do, like in the policy, it's a certification committee, um, I'm not necessarily a hundred percent married to that, although that was the original proposal in the Senate policy, or if it was a subcommittee.
Could we, could we do a subcommittee and have a few citizens? And?
No.
No.
Yeah, we, we shouldn't do that. We have the, the citizens that should be on their own, basically, yeah. But we could do a subcommittee of this body, or just have one of the existing committees, like the certification committee, review when they make the recommendation.
I would still leave it to certification. Yeah. And then they make a recommendation to us, and after Sean, then we can make the final decision.
Okay, then we make the final decision.
I, I agree with that. It's a, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll leave it with the certification committee making the recommendation, um, review and staff give to the certification committee, they'll make the recommendation, and we'll make the final determination. Okay, I agree with that. Okay, so that would be the establishment, um, of approval process. That's also the public involvement process as well, that they are public involvement, would be the public involvement.
Yes, the, the, whatever notifications would be developed, would, the public would be notifying, you know, typically when I process the art applications, you put in a notice in the paper, and something on the internet.
Okay. Well, we just talked about dissatisfaction of some community members, okay? Difficult in developing various types of public art, right there. The children's, um, art, yes, um, constitutional experience, we talked about that limitation, limiting the areas, placement of the art, we talked about that. Is there any other thing we need to, we, we need to talk about on the, the arts?
When, I have a question. When a, let's say a piece of art gets graffiti, um, if it's in public, uh, area, we are responsible for the cleaning of that, um, do we, how do we work on that? Because I don't want a piece of art to have, like, a red paint from Public Works, or gray paint, um, is, that's something we would have to discuss, or?
I'm typi-, you know, typically, uh, you, does, you develop art to be some way to remove graffiti, an easy way, you know, some type of materials that are employed, to be anti-graffiti type materials, and, and metals and stuff that we can, you know, take it off with a remover, with a, with a solvents or things like, that's typically what I've seen happen on the, on the metal ones, and then more, you know, and then, uh, with the statue type ones that I've worked on, um, you know, you have to use different materials and try to blend it, grind it off, or whatever. Definitely, we already have a graffiti program, uh, but we definitely would have to work with the Public Works, uh, and the city manager's office to, you know, remediate the graffiti. It's, 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 it's not as easy as removing graffiti out of a building, definitely.
Right. I, I just don't wanna have a piece of art with a gray stripe in the middle of it, because we didn't have time to
Right.
Come back and do a touch up.
Right. The one thing that I did see is challenging, when they etch in it, that's where we run into, you know, we could damage the art, when they etch in it, or, or put some kind of etching, or the carving into the art.
Yeah, that, that would be a very difficult situation. I mean, it would be heartbreaking, right, if, uh, we, um, or some other group put up a mural, or some type of public art, and then it was vandalized and graffitied, and there was no way to, you know, properly remove that graffiti, and it would damage the, the art, it might have to be just completely painted over, um, and start, start over. But, um, as, as Sean was mentioning, um, there, there are, you know, anti-graffiti type coatings that you can put on things like murals, um, where if somebody were to go and graffiti that art, it makes it easier for that paint to be removed. It, it's, it's not a perfect solution, I, I don't think, but, uh, it, I think it's helpful, and it could help to save the art for, you know, it could help to save it, maybe it might be, you know, a bit, um, you know, stained, but, uh, i- i- it would be helpful. So, we, you know, we, we would try to do our best to try to preserve public art if we, if it was in place.
Yeah, that's, it, it certainly could be opened up for, um, for graffiti and other act of vandalism. But a lot of times, it doesn't really happen, well, I can't say it really, it doesn't really happen, it happens sometimes, uh, but it doesn't happen as often. Case in point is the, the mural that, uh, Pat Curry was talking about, that you may or may not know about. Prior to that mural, um, being placed there, almost every week that wall would be hit with graffiti, and it has not since that mural has been there. And it's been at least, what, a year, maybe a little longer than a year, since that mural has been there. But almost every week, that wall would get, um, with graffiti. And so the staff constantly out there, you know, the wall, and it's sometimes not so nice, you know, like signs, well, uh, images or what have you. So, in, in some regards, people respect the, um, the artwork, you know, not as fast to, um, to graffiti, especially if they were involved, um, some kind of way, I know someone that was involved, it was a truly a piece of community, you know, art, they tend to not vandalize it as, as they probably otherwise would, but it certainly happened.
And Mr. Mayor, to that point, um, I, I, I think there are studies that have And Mr. Mayor, to that point, I, I, I think there are studies that have shown that, that, you know, in places where there is public art, it's shown that there's, you know, less instances of vandalism graffiti. Because like you said, they, they'll, they respect it or, you know, they'll just find another place.
Okay, so anything else on the, the public art program? Make sure the staff have enough on direction to go ahead?
Yes, I think we've, I think we've got a, you know, a fair amount of direction here and we'll, we'll take that. And you, you were bringing up how, you know, this is very preliminary, this is just about getting input. And I just wanted to let the council know that, you know, I'm going to have some more talks with, with Sean and with the city attorney. But what we will probably try to do is take the input that we've received tonight, come back and, and put together a preliminary policy or ordinance. And we'll bring it back to the council just to make sure that we're on the right track and, and then get further input from the council. And then, once we get that far, we'll then take that preliminary ordinance or policy and then we'll move forward to the planning commission. And have them review it and then have them give their recommendation. And then we'll bring it back one last time to the council for your review and approval.
Exactly, exactly, what would the planning commission, what role would they have?
Well, honestly, probably very little, except that if this requires any changes to the zoning code because we do move forward with anything on private property, then the planning commission, as you all know, has to review and make a recommendation on any change to the zoning code. Other than that, they probably won't have much of a role at all. But if, if the legal technicalities require, then we will follow them, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, I think we're pretty much finished with the arts and public places program. We'll thank the staff for putting together the report and the presentation. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Let's move on to our next item. The next item on the agenda had to do with the public walkways. Let's have the staff report, give this report.
Good evening. Good evening, honor of the mayor, member of the council. This evening, staff would like to provide you some background information on the current parkway design policy and request some directions and guidance to, to, to any revisions to the policy that we're about to make. City council adopted the current parkway design policy back in February two thousand and eighteen. And then on, in July of last year, council also revised the, the policy to include a contractor requirements and the landscape height limitation portion. Current parkway design policy follows a low impact development design approach, which is to minimize the hardscape and to increase the landscape to extent possible. The policy follows two design options, one is a walkable and the other one's a non-walkable options. The walkable option is the basic, requires a minimal maintenance, no public works permits, requiring seventy-five percent landscaping. The non-walkable option is a little more complex. It's, it requires a little more guidance. The option requires a similar of a little sketch for the, for the conditional public works permit and also, again, seventy-five percent of the live landscape coverage. The landscape ground options are limited in order to maintain some of the levels of the neighborhood consistency. What's not currently allowed are followings, hardscape over twenty-five percent. So seventy-five percent has to be, has to be vegetation. We do not allow sharp edged vegetations. We also do not allow pebbles, rocks, barks and any structures and also ground cover over twelve inches. To encourage the residents to improve and maintaining the parkway, the city council may need to consider revising the parkway design policy. But with some factors in mind, number one is that climate change and also the drought condition. As you know, that we are in a severe, California's in severe drought condition. And not only the water supply is limited, and as you heard from Golden State Water presentation, that it is not getting better as far as water supplies. The other one is socioeconomic and cost factor. As the water supply gets reduced, the cost for the water will be higher for the irrigation for the parkway. And then also possibly considering the non-traditional materials like DG or decorative paving or permeable hardscapes are some of the options that the council may consider. And then the last one is changing the parkway improvement approval process. Right now, it, it is very simple conditional public works permit that is required for just, just the non-walkable option. But make it easier for the approval process. So those four things are what the staff recommend this council to consider. So with that, staff will like open up to council for any direction that they provide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the staff report. Anyone want to speak on this item?
I understand all the items that we restrict like the that, the pebbles and stuff. But my suggestion is, let's keep the the six inch plants, but I would like to see the city have the owner or the renter owner of the property sign a waiver. Not, you know, not hold the city liable for any damages if they decide to go with pebbles and rocks. Let's turn ownership over to the owners. Or, you know, and if it's a renter, they have to get the permission from the owner before they do any landscaping on the parkway. I take care of mine and, you know, when I first bought my house, I thought it was mine. And I think, oh, we go to hell, it belongs to the city, why am I taking care of it? Well, I think if we put a waiver in place, I think renters would be more inclined not to do it because they don't want to get the owner involved. Let the owner, like myself, like Rhonda, like most of it. Sign off and say, if you decide to go against what we're saying, you're held liable, not the city.
And I'm, and I'm happy to look at that. I, I, I don't know that that program's been done, but I'm happy to look at it. And I'm also happy to look at, just generally, since the property owners are responsible for maintenance in general ordinance, is that necessary or is that something where the liability would already be on that? I think, no matter what the case is, we'll take a look at that and we'll bring it back to you so that you have a really clear idea of, you know, what we, what the city's liability is, what the property's liability is, and whether we can shift it, and I'm happy to do that.
Can I also piggyback on what Pat just brought up? In that same vein, I think also there needs to be something written about the care of the parkways being the responsibility, that it is not the city's, for weeds, for the, the mess that we're seeing out there that we all have to step through. We have plenty of cars that are parking on our streets and sometimes you don't even want to get out on the passenger side because of the mess. So in that same vein, Greg, I would ask that it be written in such a way that the upkeep is also addressed.
Yes ma'am, and your policy currently is written that way, but in working with Mr. Lee and Mr. Moore, we'll take a look at the ordinance and make sure that that is shifted to the property, the adjacent private property.
Yeah, like I said, it, it says that what is not, what is not currently permitted, it talks about vegetation taller than twelve inches. And Kevin and I spoke about this like last weekend, just the other day, I was out riding my bicycle. When I tell you there's many trees, there's many trees out in the, in the, in the parkway, you know, it's tall, you're right, you can't get out, you know, if you're on the passenger side. And some of them are spilling over, over to the curb. Some of them actually look pretty nice, but they're still too tall, you know. But that's what's not currently permitted, so those are in violation of the ordinance as we speak now. So I guess we want to decide how we want to change the, the ordinance. Let's, let's hear from councilwoman, just words. Did you have any other questions?
I would like, the only thing I don't like are the little pebbles. Because I know that the kids walking from, to and from school are going to be picking those up and throwing it to each other. I'm okay with any other, you know, little cement or papers or probably up to seventy-five percent of that, but I would like to see at least twenty-five percent of tolerant plants, something green. Because just all mulch or cement doesn't look that great, but a little bit of green would be nice.
And then I have a comment. If we set the guidelines for, you know, this is currently allowed, this is currently not allowed, you know, this and this, do we need a permit for the residents? I mean, can they just, as long as they're within the guidelines and follow it? You know, do we have to have public works check? I mean, obviously if, if they see that it's not in compliance, then, you know, you get ticketed or whatever. But I don't know, do we need them to submit a sketch and, and all that? I just feel like it's such a little, such a little patch that I don't, to me, it seems a little excessive. But then again, people do a lot of things, so.
Well, I, I could try to address that. So, you know, when, when we develop the, the new policy or ordinance, you know, we can, we can certainly look at some options for how we go about that. But, you know, it, it might be advisable where we try to make it as simple as possible. Where, you know, we, we only require a permit or a contractor for instances where, you know, there's significant construction that might need to take place. So, for example, we, we brought this, Robert and I mentioned this or talked about this. If, you know, a water main were damaged and that runs through the, the parkway and that would require a plumber to come in and, you know, dig down six feet, you know, in order to repair that main or whatever that might be. You know, that might be an example of significant construction which would require a permit. I don't know, maybe even an encroachment permit in order to do work in the public right of way. But for, you know, maybe smaller type improvements, you know, just general landscaping, some hardscape, pavers, that sort of thing. Maybe that wouldn't trigger a contractor or a permit. But we can, we can look further at that and then come back to you with, with the recommendation.
Yeah, I definitely would agree. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Anything more? Yeah, I would definitely would say that, I agree unless you tap into the, to the water line, there's no reason to have to have a contractor. Because a lot of this work, you know, the occupants themselves and to have a, have to pay a contractor to do this work where you can do yourself is totally, I don't think it's appropriate. You know, unless, like I said, they're having, they're digging down and, you know, and possibly could, you know, break the water wide or something like that, then yeah, I get that. Contractors would be more trained to do such, they'd be licensed bonded and get something happened and to make the city whole. But residents shouldn't have to do that, they're not doing that type of work.
And just sort of my, my personal take on it is, you know, if, the more difficult it is for our residents to improve their parkways and improve their, the look of the neighborhood, you know, work just may not be done. Improvements may, we may, we may discourage, you know, improvements from being done. So if it's, if it's simpler and it doesn't require permit, that might encourage improvements, so.
I will.
What else we want to do with this, with this policy? Anything? Are there any other items that staff want us to address on this or that we have to test on?
One of the, again, one of the things that we don't require, allow is the hardscape over twenty-five percent of coverage. So seventy-five percent has to be, has to be vegetation because, mostly because of the, the need of the permeable space. But also you could look into option of, I know that DG is not what you prefer, but some kind of a non-traditional materials that could be used, that could be permeable, but it's not a vegetation. Mulch is an option, I know some people don't like mulch, but also permeable paver, which is the hardscape. But does, does have the water, you know, get recharged onto the ground. So those are some of the options that the, the council may, may want to consider. Again, right now, seventy-five percent has to be vegetation and that very often limits a lot of the opportunity. For example, I know that MWD has a program where you remove a grass and then put in a drought tolerant plants plus the, and design. A lot of those are limited because of the fact that we need to put back seventy-five percent of the vegetation. So that's one thing that I would.
Yes ma'am.
What would be a more reasonable percentage, would you think, than the seventy-five percent?
Again, that's the council's consideration, again, because it is, I think it's a mixture of permeable materials that you could use and you could keep it at seventy-five percent. But if you use some proportion of that, say for example, twenty-five percent of it be allowable for, for permeable materials, then the, the residents who needs to improve the parkway only needs to do fifty percent of the, fifty percent of the vegetational plants and then they have more option on the other material. So again, it is, it's very flexible whether you can make it the percentile of vegetation or percentile of permeable spaces or coverages. So again, you have a lot of flexibility in that.
Yeah, and, and to Shirley, councilmember Quevys's point about your, your thought about seventy-five percent pavers or hardscape and twenty-five percent plants. Perhaps that, that could be something we could look at. If the seventy-five percent, if that was hardscape, as long as it's permeable, then, you know, that, that could be something that, you know, would be workable.
That, that will allow you to get the, there's some funds out there from the water company that if you switch or if you cut down on your greens, you're able to get some type of funds. I, I can't remember what it is.
Correct.
I got something in the mail for it.
Correct, MWD has the turf removal program where they give, I believe somewhere between two and three dollars per square foot. And what you could do is you could, you could use that fund, so as you remove it, you get that fund back from the MWD and some of the residences could utilize that. A lot of the other cities does that, however, because of, well, for Cilalondell, it's a little limited because of that, because again, the seventy-five percent has to go back into vegetation, whereas the requirement needs to be much less than that. And also it requires a lot of other things such as capturing the stormwater or permeable areas and all that and stuff. So you're right, that's, those, that program is, is private, is limited in this, in the city.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that. The whole idea would make sure that they're safe to recharge rather than, you know, in particular way, right? So it's still reach, you know, go to recharge the water, so it's okay, but that, that's a word you. We say recharge, you know, recharge, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it, but can you include, if you do give a list of those permeable, whatever, what have you?
Materials.
If you could include photos so I can, or during the presentation, so you can see what it looks like.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we reduce the greenage, you know, all we're going to have is. Uh, if we reduce the, the greenage, you know, all we're gonna have is hardscape out there. Two plants and hardscape. This is the city of Longdale, not cement city. Pavers are expensive, I tell you, pavers are expensive. Most people won't use pavers because it costs a lot of money. I did my house and I had to sell two of my grandchildren to pay for it. Uh, I'm, I'm okay, fifty-fifty, but, or sixty-forty, but twenty-five percent green space, no. I, I don't want, like your dad would say, concrete city. So I like to see either sixty-forty, I go as low as fifty-fifty, but not twenty-five, seventy-five, no.
Yeah, I mean, fifty-fifty is good. I mean, I think that's why, uh, councilwoman Suarez would like to see some material. Because I, I, you know, I'm not that familiar with it. And so, I, you know, I know you don't want it to look all like what we visioned concrete to look like. But if they do have some material that looks like, you know, maybe they're brown or whatever, so it looks more like earth or what have you, then it won't look like it's just concrete just everywhere. And so I don't know what they all look like in terms of the different types of materials. So that is a good point, that, uh, councilwoman Suarez, um, pointed out, you can kind of look at the material. I think you might be okay. But fifty, I mean, fifty-fifty is, is okay for me.
Well, we're not-
Especially if the other fifty don't necessarily look like cement, you know?
Yeah, and we're not deciding tonight, Greg, we're just looking at, we can play around with the percentages.
Yes.
I think visual, I, I'm with her on that. Let's be visual, um, to consider.
What, what the staff could do is bring back, um, some, um, some pictures of what the fifty percent would look like, um, and versus what, um, twenty-five percent will look like. And I, I do agree, twenty-five percent is, um, is very, very lacking. And, um, and with the fifty percent, I think there's other options that I could, you could consider. So I'll, staff will bring back some, some photos of what's out there.
Are they able to qualify for the, uh, for the reimbursement?
Yes, I think we, we need to look at that, um, a little more closely. So, um, I think with fifty percent, um, I think it is, is, is possible. A lot of cities do have fifty percent as their, as their mineral requirement for stations. So I'll, uh, staff will look into that.
Okay.
Anything else we should look at on, on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I, I was just gonna mention that, um, we would have a similar process, uh, with the public arts program where, based on the input that we received tonight from, from, from all of you, uh, we will go back and begin to put together a preliminary, um, ordinance. And, um, then, uh, we'll bring it back, uh, for some further input from the council. And then probably we'll have to also take this item to the planning commission for the same reasons. Um, and then they'll do their work and then we'll bring it back to the council for final approval.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, with that, we have-
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not related to any of these, but we usually have, uh, items from council members or, I don't know if it's because it's a special meeting that wasn't included.
No, it's on there, I just, um, because we did, oh, you know what? Yeah, you're right. I, I was thinking of comments, so, but if you liked it, if you wanted to say, then yes, do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, because at the last meeting, I think there was some confusion. So I just wanted to ask, um, city clerk if they could agendize a certain item for discussion. Um, I'd like to agendize resolution number CC dash one eight one one dash zero four six regarding the purchasing policy. I don't know if I need any-
Would that be the next meeting you asked him for?
Um-
Oh, the next regular?
The next regular, I guess, is fine, yeah.
So that would be for this, this coming Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this is a general discussion?
General discussion, yes.
Okay, so we'll, that would be the order. Um, okay. With, with that, unless someone else has anything more, and we will go down the road.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, councilwoman Quevis, these green things you're talking about?
What green thing?
Uh, you know, the, the park, parkway?
Yeah.
Did you go to, um, some kind of thing in Sacramento, kind, kind of meeting? They gave you a munchie bag? What kind of green thing are you talking about?
They did give me a munchie bag, but it wasn't that green.
Do you something, you bring stuff out of the market?
I'm like, what is this?
You have a little stag out there and sell it?
Yeah, it wasn't green, it wasn't green, it was brown.
It was chewable.
All right, the next regularly scheduled meeting of Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM, Monday, October the fourth. Please hear chambers, it's now seven point seven, this meeting is adjourned.